Good morning, everyone. Today is Monday, November the 30th, 2020. Welcome to the Charles County Public Schools Annual Legislative Breakfast/Meeting. Does have a bit of a twist to it this year. We aren't serving breakfast. And it is virtual, so hopefully next year, things will be a little bit different. Nonetheless, we're pleased that you were able to join us today. Joining me this morning are my fellow board members. Vice Chair Latina Wilson, Board Members Jennifer Abel, Tajla Battle Lockhart, Liz Brown, David Hancock, Mike Lucas, and Superintendent of Schools Dr. Kimberly Hill. We'd like for each of our elected officials as well as our board staff members to introduce themselves as well. So could we start with our delegates, beginning with Delegate Patterson?
Good morning, I'm Delegate Edith Patterson, and I represent District 28 in Charles County. And I serve on Ways and Means Committee in the General Assembly.
Good morning, this is Delegate Deborah Davis. I also serve District 28, and I am on the Judiciary Committee.
You have any other delegates with us? Commissioner, President.
Good morning, everyone. Ruben Collins, Charles County Government. Good seeing everyone virtually. Absolutely correct. Ms. McGraw, I mean, this is our new normal. And, you know, anything I recall in recent years, I hurried up to get there so I could get something to eat before the meeting. But it's just good seeing everyone. I hope you had a pleasant holiday.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Good morning, Commissioner Bowling. Thank you for having me. Look forward to listening to you all and your needs for the upcoming year.
We have another commissioner?
Good morning, Commissioner Amanda Stewart, representing Charles County District 3. And lifelong, it feels like lifelong educator. Just want to share that my thoughts and it is always with all of my fellow teachers during this trying time.
OIC, we have a senator with us.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. Senator Arthur Ellis, servant in the Senate of Maryland. I'm on the Education Health and Environment Committee. So good to be with you.
Have you? Any other? Were we able to get Delegate Proctor? Right, could we begin with our staff? Beginning with Amy?
I'll go. I'm not sure if you said Katie or Amy, so I'll go. Hi, I'm Amy Holstein. I'm the Deputy Superintendent, and I'll turn it to Katie.
I'm Katie O'Malley Simpson. I'm the Director of Communications. I'll send it to Kathy Kiesling.
Good morning, this is Kathy Kiesling. I'm the Director of Student Services.
Good morning, and Jason Stoddard, I'm the Director of Safety and Security.
Well, Michael, Director of Accountability.
Charmaine Thompson, Chief of Instructional Technology.
Good morning, I'm Karen Acton, Assistant Superintendent of Fiscal Services.
Good morning, Nikki Majors, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources.
Good morning, I'm Bradley Snorm, the Director of Transportation for Charles County Public Schools.
Morning, Mike Heim, Assistant Superintendent of Supporting Services.
Lynda Gill, Executive Director of Schools.
Marvin Jones, Executive Director of Schools.
Eric Schwartz, Staff Attorney.
Yeah, we missed anyone? That's a bit of a challenge for introductions. I'll have to keep that in mind for next time. Well, we look forward this morning for this opportunity to be able to collaborate with our county commissioners and legislators about issues concerning our school to give you some updates and information about Charles County Public Schools. You know, our ultimate goal is to provide a positive, inclusive, supportive, and rigorous learning environment for each and every one of our students. And so that he or she can be successful and become productive citizens in our society. And in order to do that, we really want to strive to be able to work together for a common goal. So at this particular time, I would like to turn our agenda over to Dr. Hill, who will talk a little bit more about what's going to be taking place this morning. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Mrs. McGraw, and thank you to all of our participants this morning. You know, having these conversations, at least annually, and I know we have kind of sidebar conversations as needed throughout the school year. This is so important for us as we work through this pandemic and we work through all of the challenges that we have in front of us. To all of our elected officials, including my Board of Education members, I just want to say thank you to all of you for the work that you're doing, because all of this is uncharted territory. And all of this is, all of us trying to pull together to continue some semblance of normalcy for our children. But I can tell you, what your school district has done in Charles County is that we have, like, school districts across the state shifted how we deliver instruction. And we've done that pretty quickly. And what we hope to do over the next hour or so is to give our delegates and our commissioners some details about how we've made that shift. Because that shift has really depended upon funding that we've received through CARES Act and other grants. And so we want to talk with you, and I'm going to rely upon my Assistant Superintendent for Fiscal Services Karen Acton to delve into the details here. But we've relied upon those monies to really get us to where Charmaine Thompson, Chief of Instructional Technology, has always wanted us to be, which is one-on-one with technology. So that's a great thing. And our teachers, as Commissioner Stewart said, our teachers have done yeoman's work in shifting everything they do to keep kids engaged. But we're already starting to worry about, well, what happens four years down the road or five years down the road when all of this equipment we bought this year all starts to become obsolete all at the same time? So all of those things are things we'll be talking about throughout the day. We're also going to ask you to walk through our world when it comes to enrollment. Because as you all know, school funding is based on student enrollment. So Mr. Heim is going to go through a brief report on the number of students who have decided not to enroll in Charles County Public Schools this year, and how we hope that our delegates in Annapolis can help us overcome a severe funding shortfall that we anticipate unless some things have changed. And then finally, Kathy Kiesling is going to begin a discussion about school resource officers and the role that they play in our school district, and how we hope that those will be something that would continue in our school district as a resource for children, for teachers, and for parents. So, thank you all. This operations team that you've met this morning are really the folks who would do the hard work of educating our kids, and I appreciate all of them. As well as Shelley Mackey, Kyle Graves, and Katie O'Malley Simpson and her team in Communications, who, when Mrs. McGraw and Ms. Wilson and I talked about doing this meeting virtually, they said, of course, we'll figure it out and we'll make it happen. So we're going to start with Karen Acton, and we're going to, Shelley Mackey will be sharing a PowerPoint that was sent to you by my new executive assistant, Deondra Prescott. She sent all of those materials to you last week, so you can have them in front of you to review. But you also have them on the screen. And we would encourage you at the end of each section to ask questions and have a discussion on that specific section before we move on to the next section. Okay, Shelley, you ready to share your screen? And let's get us started. And Ms. Acton, when you're ready to go next slide, you're going to have to say next slide so that they know to move it.
Sure, absolutely. Good morning, everyone. Shelley, if you're ready, I'm ready for the first slide, Slide number three, I think it is. As Dr. Hill said, as we embarked on this new challenge of trying to teach virtually, we were fortunate enough to apply for and get CARES grants to help us make that transition. In total, we received, applied for and received 8,882,000, and we have already spent 8,233,000. We received 812,000 for the broadband for unserved students, which we have about 47,000 left to spend by the end of the year. We received 231,000 for the CARES Act gear grant, and we only have about 7,000 left of that to spend. We received 3,127 of the CARES Act, the ESAR grant, and we have about 209,000 left on that to spend. And we received a tutoring grant for 1,671, which we have spent fully, and also a technology grant of 3,040, which we've spent the entire amount. The gear grant and the ESAR grant, they have time left on them. We have until September of 2022 to spend those funds. The others expire at the end of December of this year. And we do expect to spend all of the funds that we have been granted. We're not anticipating that there'll be any funds left on that. Next slide, please. For the broadband for unserved students grant, we've purchased 1,600 hotspot devices and 110 Wi-Fi access points for school parking lots. As you know, there's somewhat of a challenge with broadband in Charles County, so it was very helpful to be able to get those hotspots and Wi-Fi access points. For the CARES grant, the gear grant, we purchased 582 hotspot devices. We needed more. For the elementary and secondary school emergency relief grant, we purchased 7,155 laptops for middle school students, 2,000 headset, and 2,000 webcam. For our tutoring grant, we spent the funds on summer boost tutoring and after-school elementary and secondary tutoring, Imagine Learning for Literacy and Reading licenses for all elementary schools, System 44 Phonics Intervention License, Leveled Literacy and Intervention Kits for kindergarten through fifth grade, and Do the Math Intervention Kits for kindergarten through fifth grade, HMH Math Inventory Diagnostic Placement Monitoring Kits. For our technology grant, we purchased 7,866 laptops for high school students. Next slide, please. We did apply for our SR reopening incentive grant of 230,300 and expected to receive it. So we had spent 180,195. When we were unable to move to Phase 2 of our reopening plan in November, as we anticipated, that grant was denied. So we have already spent those funds, but we are not going to be receiving that grant. And with that, we had purchased 2,000 XP pen wireless graphics, drawing digital tablets and stylus, and we had purchased 500 tripod stands for classroom cameras, 500 keyboards with touchpads, and 2,000 USB extension cables. We have just recently been notified that the Charles County Government has given us 352,523 in CARES grant money that they had received, and we're very thankful for that. Especially, as I mentioned, since we anticipated receiving 230,000 for the reopening grant that we were not able to receive since we were not able to open due to the positive COVID-19 cases in Charles County. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I'm not sure how to raise a hand. I do have a question. Thank you very much.
Sure.
In terms of the grants, particularly for the hotspots, are they worthy any other areas identified? For example, I know for some of the college students, they use, they go into their parking lots where near churches to get service. So was that a consideration in terms of areas beside the schools or, you know, other agencies that would allow people to come in and have access to the Wi-Fi?
Yes. Charmaine, do you want to answer that more fully? Sure, thank you, Karen. Good morning, Delegate Patterson. Absolutely, which is why when we received additional funding, we purchased additional access points to enhance the wireless internet access in all of our school parking lots. Initially, we hit the hotspot areas such as Nanjamooy, Cobb Island, Indian Head, those areas, but we eventually opened it up to all. We did have a church that offered their parking lot earlier on, but it took a while to get the agreement from them. But that was over in the Hughesville area. But we're certainly made sure to enhance the wireless internet access in all of our parking lots. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, because I know some churches were anxious to do that. And for full disclosure, I will say Ms. Thompson did a great job as representative at the Legislative Black Caucus's Education Forum two weeks ago. She had a lot of questions that were offered to her, and she did a great job. So thank you very much for your presence.
Thank you, Delegate. Does anyone have any other questions for us?
I do. Good morning.
Good morning.
I know, this is Commissioner Stewart. I know CCPS sent out a lot of surveys asking parents their needs for, like, hotspot. Did you find that, what was your findings of the survey?
Good morning, Commissioner Stewart. Our survey didn't have a good yield return. We had about 42% return that survey, so it was really hard to gauge. So what we had to do in turn, we did a paper, and we also opened up our ACCP test to pretty much say, you know, what you need, let us know. And we also had it to go through the schools, because the schools have a pretty much better rapport with their demographic and their students to know who needs what and who wasn't responding to online learning. And we did those direct contacts that way as well through our PBWs. Kathy asked that. But that's pretty much how we had to do it. But the return on the surveys were not good enough to give us a good, accurate representation of exactly who needed what. So we had to go by variables, such as who wasn't totally connected at all, pretty much a door-to-door outreach in that type of scenario. And we opened up our ACCP, so we pretty much allowed parents to allow us what they needed, as well as our principals knowing those students that they just needed to get that support because they couldn't get in contact with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bowling. Actually, along the same lines, I know that our broadband task force is coming back with updates. They're getting ready to really start a phase of what we're trying to do in the commissioner wing. And I would encourage, I guess, Dr. Hill and the board to work collaboratively with Deb Hall and with them, because I think one thing that's going to be very important as we move forward with different phases of this broadband and high-speed internet rollout is to show the need. And some of the information we have that we've collected in the county might be very helpful to you all, and in turn, some of the needs that are shown from the school system could help us in our efforts to acquire grants and apply for more funding, because it's going to take a lot of funding. And this situation, although very challenging for us, I think is shying a light on how important this broadband and internet access is for our county. So thank you for what you're doing. I just would encourage you guys to continue to work with Deb Hall and our task force to get this even better for you all.
Most certainly, Commissioner. We have been working collaboratively with the Rural Broadband Task Force. I actually just delegated my colleague, Executive Director of IT Strategy, to be directly on that committee. But I've been working with them as far back years ago when the task force was first created to help identify our student populations and areas that, pretty much, the infrastructure isn't there to support, as well as if we were to go one-to-one and what areas would need that connection. So I'm eager that that is moving forward. I know it's over a one-to-three-year timeline to build out these areas, but long-term, I think it's going to be very beneficial to our school district to support students, especially as we move to more hybrid and online learning. So thank you so much.
This is Delegate Davis. Do we have any data, the actual data, as to how many kids are unserved right now regarding broadband and access, electronic?
Yes, we do have rough data, obviously, from the previous surveys that we sent out. We also have data from the schools, those students who were not connected at all. I think Amy Holstein has that direct data, but we do have some data that we're working by. Again, even with the students not connected at all, those could be different variables. It could be living arrangements. It could be students just fully giving up. So again, I wouldn't say that it's 100% accurate, but that's just pretty much what we have right now that we're working from.
Will you share the data?
Sure. Definitely, I can get that to you.
Madam Chair, Senator Ellis, I have a question. So we have, in previous weeks, my committee, Education Health, Environmental Committee in the Senate, had a hearing with the state superintendent. And the issue was so many folks who don't have income in order to pay a lot of their bills. So they might have, how should I say, broadband in their community, but they don't have the money to pay for broadband. And the superintendent indicated that it's up to the school system to voluntarily decide they want to spend some of those CARES money to pay for broadband. Have you experienced that in the county?
Certainly. That was an area we looked at early on with families not able to pay for that type of internet. We originally looked at the opportunity for different organizations that could pay, and it had to come through an organization within our school district. So we were working with Verizon as well to figure out how we could do that if an organization wanted to make a donation in order to pay. To be honest, with the hotspots we purchased, we were able to meet the needs of all of our students, even those who were unable to afford. But long-term, we're looking at solutions for families who just cannot pay that regularly. Because even some of the families who initially were able to, you know, sustain that little bit of time that they thought we were going to be out of school, now realizing it's a little bit more long-term than they initially thought, and they need to support paying for broadband service. We were able to issue them the hotspot devices, but we also looking at long-term provisions to be able to help sustain this method.
Yeah, so what you're saying, thank you, Madam, for that answer. What you're saying is you work with nonprofits to help folks with paying that bill. If they couldn't pay the bill, you just gave them a hotspot?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. So, fourth question. How about in areas of the county where you don't have any internet access, where the hotspot would not work, there's no tower? Can you talk about that in numbers? How many of those students you have in a situation like that? Even if you could get a hotspot to them, it wouldn't work because there's no cell towers in those areas?
Correct. It was hit or miss, because even if they were in an area, they may or not have had, say, a satellite or a dish. So what we did, we opened up some of our internet cafes where they were able to come into the schools to utilize our network. That numbers were, those were relatively low, I think, out at our schools. Out more on the Indian Head side of the district were where some of our schools, the students had to physically come into our schools to access the network. It wasn't that many, I would say maybe a handful. But for most part, most of our hotspot devices worked for our families. The few that didn't, you're right, that just didn't have the infrastructure supported or it wasn't strong enough, would come into our internet centers. And I can get that data back to you, Senator Ellis, to give you a little bit more accurate representation. But we have since opened up more of our internet cafes and more of our schools. Our Deputy Superintendent extended the invitation to all of our principals to say, hey, if you're getting families contacting you about it. So I can get that number back to you as far as what that data looks like and how many are actually using it. I know when we originally opened up at La Plata, it was maybe two families utilizing that center. So it's hit or miss, but I'll definitely get some more accurate data to how many of our families are actually utilizing this because the hotspot device did not work.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. And it's very important, because, Madam Chair, one thing. With, Commissioner Bowlen mentioned the broadband, okay? So if we can identify directly those students who don't have the infrastructure, and work with Deb Hall and the commissioners to make sure somehow they get on a list to build out. That's very important. So I just want you to follow up with that and to really make sure those who don't have the infrastructure, we can make them first in line to build the broadband out in their area. Thanks.
Most certainly. I'm definitely advocating for those families, because they are struggling. And I was working with a family member, literally, she's in a car, a van, with her two children, and they ride around. She lives in a great area, but she has to go to the end of her driveway just to call me on the phone. We talk literally almost every day. So those are the families that I want to ensure that, you know, that's why we're trying to work collaboratively with the Rural Broadband Task Force to ensure some of these most hard-hit areas are supported at the top of the line. So we'll definitely make sure we get you that data, because they are struggling.
Yes, Tajla, a little low.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I'm just going to lean on a little closer.
Sorry, I don't know what's going on. As we enter into the winter month, I'm glad we're having this conversation that everybody has brought up thus far. Are we bringing awareness and opening up more sites because of the winter months are coming along? And there's going to be a greater need, especially for those that you just spoke about and Senator Ellis just spoke about as well?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Battle Lockhart. We actually extended the invite to all of our principals to entertain, opening up the internet cafes. Matter of fact, just right before Thanksgiving break, I sent a team of my engineers out to several schools to enhance the access points in the school. Access points are pretty much those devices they install on the ceilings to ensure the Wi-Fi is a little bit stronger in the school where there may have, where the principal may want to have that internet cafe. But we're certainly working on enhancing that as in many schools as we possibly can. We could do it in every school, we will. And that's basically where we're working. Because you're right, when it gets cold outside, no family wants to sit out in their car in a parking lot with their car running. It's just not practical. So we're trying to do the best that we can do to support those families who just, maybe the hotspot isn't as strong or working for them. So we have, right before the break, we extended that invite to all of our principals to consider opening a cafe in their, either their cafeteria or the gymnasium. That would allow for, you know, the proper social distancing.
Great, awesome. Is there a way we can market that? So, you know, families are aware that we're doing that directly? Well?
Sure, I can work with our communications department to let them know that we are offering more. But they've done an excellent job of communicating, as soon as we open up an internet cafe, that it's available to families. And we do go by the demand. The principals are getting a lot of calls from families saying, hey, this hotspot isn't working as great. That comes directly to me, whether a principal would communicate with the instruction team, instructional leadership team, and then to my department, see how we can open up an internet cafe. So it is on-demand, really ad hoc as to how we're sending these up, not just out the blue. It really is from the demand of our community, letting us know what their needs are. But certainly, we'll communicate that a little bit more. I appreciate your comment.
Oh, not a problem. I'm just worried about, you know, because they don't have access, the way we market it, are we marketing it enough to the point that they're actually receiving the information because of the disconnect with the internet service as well? So I just wanted to put it out there. Thank you.
I'll jump in there, Charmaine. You're exactly right, Ms. Battle Lockhart, because a lot of these families are disconnected. Sending emails doesn't meet anyone's needs. So it's critical right now that we're making personal contact, which involves phone calls to all of our families. And student services and the admin team are doing a great job, because our data is somewhat slanted, because we can look to see who's not logging on. And that gives us one data point. But we have a lot of families who are making this work, but doing it really as a hardship. Families sitting in school parking lots with four children in their car, who are logging in every day. It's absolutely a It's absolutely amazing what they're doing. But it looks like they're connected, but if you don't make a personal contact with them, you don't realize that they're really not connected. Or we have families that are sending their children to family members who do have internet service. And, you know, that we're sup, some of the children are separated from their families. So the personal contact right now is absolutely critical. And as we expand, right now, we're focusing on middle and high school to start so that we can get everyone in the second quarter who has not been able to connect in the first quarter. And those numbers are small. Our largest number of disconnected students is at Laffey High School, and we have twenty-four students. So of those twenty-four, they've all been contacted. Fourteen have elected to come into the school for the second quarter to take advantage of the, um, internet service. And the others we're going to be providing customized packets for. We were hoping not to be, have to do that, but with stalling moving into the next phase, we really can't wait. So, um, you know, the surveys, as, um, Ms. Stewart said, you know, we tried to go that route. They really just don't meet the need of our families. So right now, it's the personal contact that's critical.
Thank you. And I have one last question, um, to Commissioner Bowlin. Um, if he's still here, I can't see on the screen, but, uh, or Amanda, anyway.
I'm here.
Um, is there a, could a board member participate in the cat broadband task force?
I believe there's somebody from the Board of Education, but I'm not opposed to it. I, I, I would have to say that had to come up with the entire Board of Commissioners, but I'm not opposed to that.
Um, if I, if I may, actually, there's two. It's myself and, uh, Mr. Hancock have participated in the past on this task force.
Okay. I thought there was, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure, but I, the more the merrier. It's up to, it's up to the instructor and how your board decides to put on that board. It's been a matter to me.
Okay.
Under the preference of the other board members.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Again, this is Commissioner Stewart. I have a, uh, comment. Um, I'm taking in, you know, listening to everything that everyone is saying. And we understand that this is a difficult time, not just for technology. Um, one of my concerns is the policy. And so maybe, um, Dr. Hill, I mean, Ms. Holstein or a board member can explain something to me. I have a concern that different districts around the, around the state are doing different things with respect to grading. And when we're talking about technology and people having to, like, get in the cars and drive and you, 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 you know, parents are trying to work and support their children. I, I have a, a, a huge concern when teachers are saying they're not accepting late work. Um, you can really justify the need for flexibility. And I believe, again, everybody on this call knows I'm an educator, and I have extended my flexibility to the max. And I expect all teachers to be understanding and all principals to have those policies in place that help support student success. So it has, has the county, just, I know we're, we're talking about technology, but just on the basis of the, the concerns of technology. And even though you live in an area where you have, like, Verizon FiOS, I have FiOS, but there are some times that my child cannot get online because FiOS is not working. It's down. It, it needs, the router needs to be rebooted. It may be it's an overload because all the kids in the county and all the parents, or a lot of the parents are trying to use it. So with respect to technology, how are we communicating to our principals and teachers about making sure that teachers are being, um, uh, uh, they're, they're, they're not being so rigid not to, um, recognize that some students are having problems with signing on?
So Commissioner Stewart, you bring up some, some great questions. I'm gonna start, and then I'm gonna ask Ms. Holstein to jump in with more detail. Uh, but since the pandemic began and since we went to virtual instruction, we as staff have asked members of the Board of Education to waive certain policies. And so they've been doing that, uh, monthly as we go through this pandemic. And at our next board meeting, we're gonna actually have a discussion and a report on first quarter grades and, uh, staff request to waive parts of the grading policies so that we can, uh, be more, uh, have more grace, I guess, for our students, uh, because we realize that they're in very difficult, challenging situations. And so we're gonna have that discussion on December eighth at the board meeting. Uh, Ms. Holstein has worked, and Dr. Gill and Mr. Jones have worked daily with our principals to talk with them about grace and about sharing with their teachers the idea that we really need to assist and understand that families are all coming to this with very different conditions at home. Some have ill family members at home. Some, some of our students are now working a lot more than they normally would have worked if we had required them to come to school every single day from, you know, physically in, in the school building. So, uh, you know, our goal is to continue instruction, but also to do it in a way that's flexible and a way that is, is giving, uh, consideration to all of the different challenges that our kids are facing. Um, Amy, you wanna jump in and add anything there?
Sure. Um, so just, just some other things that we're trying to do to help students. If in, if there's a day that a student can't log on for whatever reason, parents just need to write a note, and that will be an excused absence. We're using code thirteen. So that students are not held, um, for an unexcused absence for a reason that's completely out of their control. So I encourage all of our parents just to make sure that they're writing a note documenting that the reason why their child was absent was because of an internet issue or, and, you know, not having the ability to log on for a day. Another, this is honestly a struggle for us right now, and we've been working on this since first quarter, but we're still struggling in this area. Every Wednesday, because it's the asynchronous day, in the morning, we have content planning with every teacher in the county, which really has been a huge benefit for us, um, to be able to have weekly professional development sessions. During those professional development sessions, the content folks have been working with the teachers to go through the curriculum to identify critical content. Because what some of our students are experiencing, and I hear from parents a lot, is that the workload is immense right now, much larger than it ever was when schools were open. Talking to teachers, they have, they have great intentions. They're trying to find ways to keep kids connected and engaged, but also making sure that when we can bring kids back, that we don't have this huge achievement gap. But what ends up happening is that teach, that everything takes longer teaching in this virtual environment. And so what teachers aren't getting to, their assignment is homework. And so kids are having hours and hours and hours of work that's piling up on them and really causing anxiety for a lot of students. So it's a struggle for us right now. We are going to keep working with teachers to help them realize that right now, as Dr. Hill said, we need to give kids grace. And assignment should be collected, and they should be given full credit. That's the advice that we've given all of our principals, that that needs to happen. So at this point, this is how I'm advising parents. If that's not happening, then we need to address it teacher by teacher. Because making, um, you know, me being out there talking to teachers as a whole and encouraging and through our principals, that works. But if it's not working for a child, we need to really drill down to a teacher and talk to the parent, the teacher, and the administrator. And that's the email that I'm advising and sending back to families right now that are contacting me because their kids are ready to shut down. Because it's just too much. There, as it is, they're home, they're not ha- having any social interaction, and then they have this huge workload on top of them. So, you know, with all the technology enhancements we've made, we keep getting better at this. And I think that we will continue to keep getting better. I don't think education will ever be the same again. But I do think at this point, if you're hearing from parents that they need to contact the teacher, and if that's not working, then we need to have a conference with the principal. And Mr. Jones and, uh, Dr. Gill and I often attend those to help.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, I will add this one because it's, and I do apologize for skewing the conversation, but I made a suggestion, and I would suggest this to all teachers. I don't know with synergy if you have the ability to do this, um, but with the system I use, I have the ability. I can go back to last year and look at the number of assignments that I assigned. And I think it would be very important that either leaders of CCPS make it mandatory, or if you generate a report, compare first quarter last year to first quarter this year to show teachers that if you're, if you're being really fair, um, with the amount of work that's being, um, provided. So that's just a suggestion.
We're already doing it. We're thinking alike, Commissioner Stewart. We have a report in synergy that, um, my folks are helping principals generate right now. And I can go back and look that in first quarter, for example, in AP history, there were eighteen assignments last year. But when I look this year, there's thirty-two.
Exactly.
And so to send that to teachers, because again, their well intentioned. They're not trying to hurt children. They're trying to teach in this whole new way and trying to make sure that kids don't fall behind. So those reports started to go out last week. And again, the best, um, remedy right now is teacher by teacher.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could jump in before we move to the next section, uh, I believe that student member of the board, Ian Hurd, has joined us uh, as well as Delegate Proctor and Delegate Wilson. So welcome to all of you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Thank you for being here.
Dr. Hill, could I, um, just follow up? And in response to, um, uh, comments Ms. Holstein made, uh, earlier about where you saw the highest number of students without internet service. I just, for the benefit of our delegation, um, the Najmoi area and Cobb Net are the two targeted funding source areas for our broad, broadband build out. So, so just for purposes of the delegation, we can see the obvious need just by the numbers that you expressed with that. I mean, that is a poor area where we've seen, um, literal, uh, literally dark spot within the county. And so those are the prioritized areas. So, uh, what you were saying earlier, and I just wanted to make that point, uh, for the delegation, that's exactly where we recognize that the buildup really needed to be prioritized. And just seeing and hearing you, um, speak to that on a very real level. I mean, it, it makes, makes that even more of an important issue for us. So, you know, I just wanted to make that point.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions, we'll move along to the next section of our presentation, which is about enrollment. Uh, Mr. Mike Heim, Assistant Superintendent for Supporting Services, is going to lead this part.
Morning, everyone. Uh, next slide, please. As the slides are eventually put up, uh, I want to explain, uh, three main areas where enrollment impacts, whether we see enrollment increases or decreases, and how that impacts our school system. Number one, it affects our state and local funding. It affects staffing at schools, individual schools. It also affects our CIP, which is our capital improvement program. And I'll go into more details about those three areas and how they are affected in a moment. Uh, I would like to talk about our enrollment numbers, as hopefully that screen comes up in a moment. Right, as we see the screen now, we look at enrollment in two different ways. We look at enrollment as a head count, and what a head count means, every student is counted as one student. And it makes sense, common sense. Uh, we also look at it another way as FTE, full-time equivalent. And what that is, is it is, uh, it's counted differently at our pre-K level. So if a student is just an AM or PM, meaning they attend half-day pre-K, they're only counted as point five students. In our schools that are Title I schools with pre-K, where those pre-K students attend whole day, they're counted as an, a, a one individual student. Uh, so that's accounts for the differences when you see between head count and FTE. So if you look at the pattern over the last several years, going back to school year sixteen, seventeen, you'll see that we've been experiencing an increase in enrollment, uh, in our school system over the last several years. So going back from school year fifteen to sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, we saw an increase of eighty-three in terms of head count. We saw an increase of fifty-two point five students in terms of FTE. As you can see, in seventeen, eighteen, from the previous year, we had an increase of five hundred and one using head count and five hundred and sixty-three point five using FTE. Uh, for school year eighteen, nineteen, with, using head count, we saw an increase of two hundred and seventeen students. And using FTE, we saw an increase of two hundred and thirty point five students. Then going back to last school year, we had an increase with head count of four hundred and thirteen students. Looking at FTE, an increase of two hundred and sixty-four point five students. Uh, the reason why I wanted to bring up enrollment counts this year, because of the pandemic that we are experiencing and, uh, differences in how we are delivering instruction, we've seen an increase, I'm sorry, we've seen a decrease. Let me repeat that again. We've seen a decrease in the number of students enrolled in Charles County Public Schools this year. If you look at the head count, we're down seven hundred and fifty-three students from last September thirtieth. And if you look at FTE, we're down five hundred and fifty students from last year's September thirtieth enrollment. Breaking down some of those numbers, we've seen nine hundred and fifteen students enroll in homeschool uh, since the summertime, uh, for the start of this school year. Uh, out of that nine hundred and fifteen students who've withdrawn from the school system and are now being homeschooled, two hundred of those were private school students. So we, most likely, we'd not have seen any of those students enrolling in our school system. But because of changes with some of the private schools and how they're delivering instruction, some of those students who would have attended private schools are now enrolled in, uh, homeschool, which we provide those services. So looking at that, we're down about seven hundred students, uh, accounting for, uh, students who, uh, withdrawn for homeschooling purposes. Uh, just even from the start of the school year, uh, back in the last week of August, we're down a hundred and fifty-six students, uh, since the start of the school year, students who withdrawn from our school system, uh, to become homeschooled. Uh, breaking down those numbers a little bit further, and we're seeing the biggest impact, uh, the biggest drop in the number of students is at the elementary level. And it makes sense because of the fact that it's more difficult for those students to learn, uh, with the online learning that's taking place. And obviously, since they're at the point where they're developing those reading skills, so they're, uh, it's a very instrumental point in their, uh, education. But looking at some of those numbers, we're down two hundred and ten pre-K students from where we were last school year. We're down one hundred and fifty kindergarten students from where we were last school year. Uh, and then looking at our projections, we actually following that pattern over the last several years where we've seen enrollment increases, we were projecting for this school year, uh, over four hundred and fifty additional students in the school system. So you can see how this pandemic has affected our school system, but not only our school system, other school systems around the state. And this is why we wanted to talk to our, our state delegates and, uh, state senator this morning, along with our commissioners, talk about our concerns and how this drop in enrollment is gonna impact us only this school year, but in the years following. Next screen, please. All right, I won't read through these item for item, but I will highlight, uh, some of the bullets. So the impact on the de-increased enrollment on funding. Portion of our state funding is based on full-time equivalent and school enrollment as from September thirtieth. So you can see how this is gonna affect us in the years following. So we're gonna be using this year's September thirtieth enrollment, which is, uh, in the process of being verified by the state. But that's gonna affect our state and local funding, uh, in years to come, particularly next school year because we develop our funding for the following year. We're gonna be using this year, past years, our current years, enrollment numbers for funding purposes. Uh, also, looking at funding, local school systems are guaranteed a minimum funding level per pupil while also recognizing disparities in the local ability to raise revenues. So we talk about the county wealth. So that's also gonna be affected, the county share based upon, uh, looking around the state and our local wealth and how that impacts our funding. So we're gonna see an impact, uh, on that aspect of funding as well from the, from the state. This inverse relationship to county wealth equalizes education spending across the state. Decreased enrollment numbers also affect the operating budget, but they also affect our CIP plan. Again, that's our capital improvement plan, which we submit to the state every year, the IAC, the inter-agency school, uh, construction, uh, as they determine, uh, what which we submit to the state every year, the IAC, the inter-agency school, uh, construction, uh, as they determine, uh, what money we receive for state funding, uh, but also impacts local funding on new school projects, additions and major systemic renovations at, at schools. Uh, and, and tying into the CIP, uh, we submit our enrollment numbers to the state. Uh, and that helps determine how much money we get for our construction projects. So as we submit numbers for this September thirtieth, uh, they're going to be showing a drop in enrollment, which can ultimately impact our school funding. Because the state will not fund a new school unless you're demonstrating that there's already overcrowding in the surrounding schools where that school, new school is going to be built. Or also the same thing with an addition to a school to, uh, uh, address increased enrollment, uh, at that area. So this is technically got, particularly going to have an impact on us potentially on the next couple of years as we look at our, uh, enrollment numbers, uh, but more so how it impacts the money we'll receive for state and local funding. And on the note of local funding, uh, we know that every school year, uh, after January, we submit our September thirtieth enrollment numbers to the county, uh, the folks in planning and growth management, as they look at available school seat allocations, uh, around the county. So this year's going to show a drop in enrollment numbers, but again, it's going to be caused because of the pandemic. So we're a little bit concerned about how that may affect school seat allocations that are issued out, uh, for next school year based on the fact that we're showing a temporary drop in enrollment and we fully anticipate the enrollment to go back up after we get past this current pandemic. And the last bullet on that page, the budget decreases means staffing will not meet the needs of students returning once in-person learning resumes. Next slide, please. Other impacts of this, the decreased enrollment on local funding. The county appropriation must maintain a maintenance of effort level, may not be less than the prior year's funding on a per people basis. So as again, as we talk about how this is going to affect us down the road, as we submit our September thirtieth enrollment numbers in terms of funding for next year and the maintenance of effort, uh, that may have a negative impact on our funding on the local level. Because again, we're showing a temporary drop in enrollment caused by this current pandemic. And on that same note, Charles County Public Schools has not seen a reduction in FTEs since two thousand and fifteen. A reduction in enrollment through the current COVID-nineteen pandemic has a potential impact both state and local funding. And then talking a little bit of how it affects staffing. Schools are staffed based on enrollment numbers. So as we show decreases this year and Amy Holstein and her staff start looking forward to next year in staffing schools, because of these drops in pre-K numbers and K numbers at certain elementary schools, we potentially see less students, or I'm sorry, less teachers staff at those buildings, less IAs instructional assistants to help supplement those programs. You can see the reduction in administration and counselors because again, staffing at individual schools are based upon enrollment numbers. Teacher to pupil ratios are affected by enrollment changes. Enrollment can affect programs offered at schools, and this also includes outside programs, uh, through various, uh, county services that are out there. Enrollment affects outside services provided at schools. Staff members are sometimes transferred from one school to another due to shifts in enrollment. So a school that temporarily shows a decrease, decrease in enrollment, basically some of their students sent to another school next year based upon that temporary decrease. The issue is, is students re-enroll back into our schools, uh, hopefully later this school year or even the beginning of next school year. The issue is that you staff based upon our numbers now. So what you don't like to see next school year as those numbers go back up, that a student is assigned to a kindergarten or pre-K teacher, those classes become over capacity where you have thirty students in there and then you have to add additional teacher there to start the school year. And then you see students then reassigned to another teacher based upon when those increases occur with, uh, enrollment and, uh, changes have to occur because of staffing with that. At this point, I have, I'll turn it over to any of our, uh, guests today for questions.
Mr. Heim, before we, before we, uh, entertain questions, I just want to add one more thing. And that is that of our four hundred and seven million dollar budget, which is a lot of money, eighty-one percent is devoted to payroll and paying for the salary and benefits of our employees, over thirty-five hundred employees. And one thing that we have worked very hard to do so far since March is that we've kept everyone on the payroll. And that has been something that superintendents across our state have been losing sleep about and juggling to try to figure out how to keep everyone gainfully employed. None of us want to do reduction in force. None of us want to lay people off, particularly in this time, as many of you have already pointed out, where we are, where, where families are suffering. Um, but so these enrollment numbers are vitally important to our funding and our ability to continue to keep everyone employed. So, uh, we would hope that our delegation be working with the governor and his budget staff to do some sort of hold harmless to school systems across the state or school systems across the state so that we can keep our people intact, because we know these kids are coming back, uh, but it's not reflected in our numbers currently. So sorry for that. Any, any questions for Mr. Heim?
Dr. Hill, if I could, um, jump in for a second and just mention that our current projections based on the unofficial enrollment figures is that our county's maintenance of effort level could be down by three point seven million in fiscal year twenty-two and our state funding could be down as much as two and a half, two point five million, um, for fiscal year twenty-two. And as Dr. Hill said, it's, it's based on the, um, enrollment nu- numbers as of September thirtieth. And while we expect those numbers to increase, if our funding is based on those numbers, it could be drastically cut for fiscal year twenty-two.
Um, I have a question.
Delegate Wilson?
Yes, um, thi- this obviously sounds like not just a, um, a county problem, but a state problem. So what, what actions are you guys taking with the state superintendent, uh, with the, the, the state people as far as, I, I, I don't see this coming out of the legislature, to be honest with you. I mean, it can, but I think it would be pointless and, uh, hopefully duplicative because this is a problem throughout the state. I really don't think this is a delegation issue, nor do I think this is a legislative issue. I think this is something that would come from the top and from, um, all of the school boards. What are you guys doing to far, as far as making sure that the, um, the governor's people understand what's going on and that the school board, the, um, the state superintendent understands what's going on?
So I have a draft of a letter, great question, Delegate Wilson, uh, that the Public Su- School Superintendents Association of Maryland, commonly known as PZAM, uh, is writing and sending to the state superintendent and the chair of the state board of education, as we speak, um, Mr. Schwartz or Ms. McGraw, I don't know if you want to speak to actions taken by MAB or by, uh, other lobbyists to try to get to the governor's budget staff before a budget actually comes to the general assembly.
You can, uh, go ahead. I could jump in just for a second and then explain that every school board in the state is concerned about this. Every school board is raising this with their own delegations as well. The governor's office is well aware of this concern as is leadership in Annapolis. And the, uh, reason I wanted, wanted to bring it to your attention is to explain the local effect of this issue on Charles County Public Schools, but recognize that there will be fixes that will be proposed in Annapolis. And we're looking for support in any way that would hold us harmless or, or help us as we expect, uh, the students to return next fall. So thank you, Delegate Wilson, for, for raising that, that question.
Yeah, I just wanted to make, we weren't trying to get a legislative movement out of this because I believe this can be better done through the administrative, executive side and the, um, the state board of education. Everybody's on accord and everybody's in the same agreement. And as you guys said, this is something that's affecting the entire state. There's no, we have, I have no problem. I don't think you'd ever have a problem supporting it, but it should not be something, the genesis should not be in the legislative. I believe that this is something that can better serve starting out from the subject matter experts, which is the, uh, state board of education.
Uh, this is. I, I thank you for that. Just, oh, just to point out that there, there is state law on this, so we needed state law correction. And, uh, Delegate Proctor, I'm sorry to cut you off. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to tell you that we already have a delegate from Prince George's who is submitting a state bill. Uh, I don't know exactly how it's worded at this point, but it's designed to hold the school systems harmless for the school year. So that's already going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Heim, I actually have a question. So I think it's directly tied into what we've been, um, discussing with our allocation policy. And I understand this year is kind of an abnormality because COVID with the, um, enrollment. Um, however, I've been looking at numbers and doing some homework on our enrollment from even before now. And it, it appears that the highest, and there's a, a document the board of education provided, it provides the, um, amount of children that are enrolled per grade, school-wide, and it shows from kindergarten all the way to the twelfth grade, each, how many students are in each grade throughout the county. And one thing I noticed is our largest amount of students, um, the largest size class-wise is, I believe, and this is data from last year, was the seventh, eighth, ninth grade class from last year. And then when you get towards, uh, the first, second, third grade classes, there's a significant like three, four higher, uh, student decrease in students, um, in those classes. So are you seeing, and I remember when I spoke with Mr. Andritz before and asked why, um, a elementary school was slated to be the next school opened opposed to a middle school, and we see that's the largest uh, overcrowding point was in middle schools. He said, because usually when folks are, um, moving into the county, they tend to have a larger concentration of elementary school students. So that's why you all are concentrating on an elementary school. So based on those numbers, are you seeing even before COVID that there's a decrease in enrollment in, in the Charles County Public Schools?
So I'll, I'll first talk about the elementary school. And we are, you know, projecting a need for an elementary school based upon, uh, the actual numbers. Uh, so as you mentioned, Mr. Boylan, we do look at individual numbers per grade level, then we follow those as they meticulously, from grade to grade. Uh, but also, you know, in terms of the school seat allocations and how those, one of the factors that determines how they are, uh, counted, uh, or given to development is based upon yield factors. Uh, so, you know, when you talk to Mr. Groth, when you talk to Mr. Yekley, we see the highest yield factors at the elementary level. So when a new house is built or a new townhouse is built, we see a larger number of students at the elementary level than we do at the middle or high school level. Uh, so that is one of the factors in why we are projecting the need for an elementary school, uh, before the middle school. Uh, and then also with the fact, uh, not to get too far off subject, that we are in the process of the renovation and expansion of Benjamin Starred Middle School, which is going to add over two hundred and seventy additional seats at that school. And to go along with that, we're doing a countywide redistricting so we can, uh, rebalance numbers, uh, at all eight, uh, middle schools. Uh, but, you know, looking at, uh, those, you know, if you want to break down per grade level, uh, we do see, uh, at the middle school level, you know, looking at last year's numbers, higher in terms of the overall numbers. Uh, but when you look at individual class sizes, uh, you're going to see at the elementary level, you're going to have smaller class sizes. And I, you know, I don't want to step on, uh, Ms. Holstein's toes here, but that is by design. At the elementary level, you're going to assign less students per class than you would at the middle and high school level, uh, based upon the type of instruction and where they are developmentally. So I hope that answered your question, or if not, I can try to provide some official clarification.
I think what you're saying is you want to show more capacity in elementary schools because you have a, a lower, um, class size, less, less students in the classroom. Um, so when those students, um, and I think, I, I don't have the number, the paperwork right in front of me, but I think it was like twenty-one, twenty-two hundred in like the seventh and eighth grade class from last year. And then you look at like the first and second grade, I mean, all, pretty much all of the elementary schools, uh, numbers, all the grades were lower than, much lower than that. So I guess what I'm getting at is when those children make it to middle school, it's going to show even more because there's more kids in classrooms. When you get to middle school and high school, um, there's going to be even more room in those schools. Now anticipating what numbers will come in with the new elementary school kids is something that's kind of up to hypothesis, I guess you would say, because you don't know. Um, the kids are being born, how many, you know, how many foreign kids are in, in Charles County. So that, that, that's just, I'm just trying to get the numbers and data straight. You did, you answered my question. Thank you.
And then again, unofficially, uh, because it's not been verified by the state, but, uh, for September thirtieth, we're showing ten thousand nine hundred and forty-six students at the elementary level, six thousand three hundred and seventy-eight students at the middle school level and eight thousand seven hundred and fifteen students at the high school level. Though obviously when comparing that overall numbers, you're going to have more grade levels at the elementary level than you would at the middle school where you only have three grades for middle school and at the high school, you have four grades, uh, for high school.
Thank you for explaining it. Thanks, Chairman.
Yeah, I have a question, um, Mr. Heim, Arthur Ellis. Um, in your data, you, uh, the total enrollment in your early presentation, you talked about private school students. Uh, I'm a little thrown off by that. Why would you include private school students in your numbers?
So some of the students who would have been registered for private schools this year have chosen to be homeschooled and they're not receiving homeschool materials and, uh, I don't want to say instruction, but there is a, a process and I'll let Ms. Holstein go into more detail about, about that with homeschool students. But we, as a school system, work with our homeschooled population. So there's information that they have to work, they have to submit. Uh, and we have, uh, staff who are assigned to, uh, a homeschool program. Uh, so those students who are in private school are now receiving, I don't know what right word to say, services from the school system, but they are receiving some direction from the school system. And I'll let Ms. Holstein explain our homeschool process. That will help.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sure. So Mr. Heim explained it well, Senator Ellis. Um, we've seen families that were enrolled in private schools, but because of the closure have decided that they wanted to re-enroll in CCPS so that they can then, um, apply to be homeschooled. So those numbers have increased this year, um, and it's having an impact on multi, um, grade levels. And it's kind of multifaceted because we are sure that these students, although they're enrolled in homeschooling right now, that when we're able to welcome students back, will most likely go back to what they originally were enrolled in before COVID hit. So the numbers are very fluid right now. We have families calling the homeschool office, um, every day because they make the decision that, um, that their current instructional platform that they're working on is just too difficult for their family and they're opting to go the whole, the homeschool route. We anticipated that with our enrolled kids. We were a little surprised with the private school students that were deciding to go the homeschool route. That was, um, a little bit of a surprise for us.
So a little follow-up. Um, so in the traditional sense of homeschool, uh, the kids are on their own with their parents, uh, curriculum, everything like that. So the terminology is kind of throwing me off. Um, so is there another terminology that you use? So there is a homeschooling for religious reasons, they have no contact with the school system, but giving you a notice that they're homeschooling. So this category of students who came from private school, they're in the public school system getting materials from the public school system. I thought there was another terminology for them and I, homeschool.
There are, and it is confusing. So we have home and hospital. These students are enrolled, um, because they have a medical issue and we provide all of the instructional resources for home and hospital students. But for families that choose homeschooling, they have to enroll in, uh, what we call an umbrella, um, program. And we do not have any contact with those students. They are completely, um, registered in homeschooling under their parents' direction. The only contact that we have is we have to verify that they're enrolled in a program. And once a year, we do an assessment of their portfolio where we are, the families come in, bring their portfolios and we confirm that the students have received the, um, instruction for that particular grade level in order to move on to the next. So those numbers have increased significantly this year due to COVID. So it's confusing. There are two programs. One that we provide instruction for and the other that we do not.
Yeah.
Interesting, our home and hospital numbers have decreased and the reason being that kids are virtual. So they don't need to be unen, you know, enrolled in home and hospital because they're able to access their education virtually. Sorry, Senator Ellis, did you have a follow-up?
Okay, no problem. Yeah, sorry to interrupt you. So it says, so it seems like you counted the homeschool numbers when, uh, school personnel are not heavily involved with those students.
They're not.
Because the parents are taking the curriculum and it's a one-year report. So why would you include those numbers in the entire enrollment, uh, uh, figures? I mean, it's not, I don't really see how that will kind of, uh, follow through with traditional practice. Um, it's not, I don't really see how that will kind of uh, follow through with traditional practice. And so maybe we could follow up offline. I don't want to take up too much time with that, but there's a little disconnect there. Thank you.
And Senator Ellis, the private school kids would, you know, would not be factored into our, any enrollment. Uh, we just wanted to show, uh, demonstrate how many students across the county, whether it be public school or private school. Because of changes in how instruction are being delivered, are seeking homeschool options instead of more traditional in-person instruction. Based upon the current pandemic.
And how much do we get per student and uh, funding?
Ms. Acton, I'll let you uh, handle that.
I don't have that number right off the top of my head, but I'll get it before we, before we conclude. Okay, so uh, at this time we'll move on to our last topic, uh, which is school resource officers and Kathy Keesling. If you'll leave this portion of our discussion, please.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. We could uh, go to the next slide, please. And while we're waiting for the slide to come up, um, I just would like to say recently, I know the county commissioners were given a presentation. Uh, that I think negatively portrayed the school resource officer programs. And in light of the social unrest in our country and for good reason. We understand the discussions of school police officers is a top priority. And so um, that's why I'm here this morning to give you some background information. And some testimonials that will assist you in understanding the positive impact. That our school resource officers have with our staff, students and the communities that they serve. So, next slide. In two thousand eighteen, local school systems and law enforcement agencies were um, required under Senate Bill twelve sixty-five. To provide adequate law enforcement coverage at all schools. Uh, we can say that we had this fulfilled uh, long before this time, um, before it became a law. And that our um, through our experience, we have made our SRO program actually a nationally recognized program for others. A model program for others. Um, the mission of the SRO program is to reduce instances of juvenile offenses. By building relationship with students and helping them solve problems that could lead to um, delinquent violations and behaviors. The officers work collaboratively with the school to improve system strategies that lead to safe schools and community. Next slide, please. We have a longstanding partnership with our sheriff's office, um, starting back in nineteen ninety, the school year nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand. Uh, with one SRO at uh, Tomstone High School. We have grown this program throughout the years where uh, we now have SROs assigned to each secondary school. Um, they share and support all elementary schools as well. We have a total of fifteen SROs and two supervisors here at Central Office. They work on what is called a triad model, which includes uh, school safety, school climate. And education and intervention and the interventions and the uh, education they give are listed on this slide. They teach our DARE programs, truth and consequences, um, they manage the, uh, they work with the teen court. We care safe driving program, every fifteen minutes program at the high school. Summer enrichment camps, uh, school wellness visits from Sheriff Barry happen on a yearly basis. Next slide, please. Many don't under, uh, may realize it, but our SROs document all, any type of contact. That they have and any interactions they have with students, including um, investigations, giving advice. Um, or just, you know, casual conversations. They document them all. And as you can see, in school year eighteen nineteen, they had over twenty thousand documented. Non-enforcement actions with students. And in uh, the shortened year of the nineteen twenty school year, uh, they were already at sixteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-six. Interactions before we closed. Um, it's also important to understand that arrests that are made on school grounds are usually not physical arrests. And the difference is explained in the box on the slide. Most of the arrests in our schools are what we consider paper arrests. Where um, there's an officer initiated referral or request for charges by school officials. To Department of Juvenile Services. I want to add here as well that a lot of our paper arrests are initiated by parents. Who um, ask the school officers to initiate a referral for a charge. So um, that is a little bit different than uh, looking at the school system as always pressing charges on students. That is not paid. Uh, and you can see here, there's also the numbers for the arrests in the school years. There was um, in um, a hundred and ninety-eight arrests in school year eighteen nineteen. A hundred and eighty were paper and eighteen were physical. And um, a hundred and fifty-two arrests in school year twenty nineteen, twenty last year. And a hundred and fifty were paper with only two physical arrests in the school. Next slide. I believe we have some testimonials from some staff and a previous student, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm going to go ahead and let Katie's team um, get these started.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Edward Davis. I'm a teacher at General Smallwood Middle School. And this video is in support of uh, having a SRO at Smallwood. The present climate does not see us needing one, but in the past, they have fulfilled so many of the needs that we. Took for granted, providing that presence at the school, the intervention that's needed during. Circumstances we would really not talk about having at our school. And also the building relationships with the children in the community. And with the Smallwood community being predominantly African-American. The desire to have an SRO that builds the relationships with the kids is very essential. So yes, an SRO at school is a very positive thing. And I wholeheartedly support that and I hope the board will also.
I'm Bo Markin. I'm a school counselor at Picklewaxen Middle School. I just wanted to take a moment to let you know how valuable our school resource officer is at Picklewaxen. Uh, we have Officer Kim Selkirk stationed at Picklewaxen. Um, Officer Selkirk is a valuable part of the student services team. She works closely with our administration with all kinds of issues. Um, she is very close with the students and the parents of Picklewaxen. She's in the cafeteria every day during lunch, nothing with the students. And we conference her often when it comes to student issues in the building. Um, I think that the building would be a much different place if we didn't have her as a resource. Um, and a fellow staff member at Picklewaxen. We are very lucky to have her. Uh, thank you.
I'm Danielle Carpenter and I am a teacher in Charles County. I've been in a teacher in Charles County for eleven years now. And in that time, I have had the opportunity to work with some of the most amazing school resource officers. A lot of people, when they hear the word officer, they think authority, they think authoritarian. But here, our school resource officers, our SROs, we need the exact opposite. They're friends to our kids, to our communities. We build a relationship with the officers in the police department in this county that otherwise would never happen. Our students look to them for guidance, um, they look to them for support. For some of our kids, they're the only positive interaction they ever have with a police officer. And having them in the schools is so important to that relationship building, to that community building.
My name is Ashman Harris and I'm currently a third-year Lawston at Villanova. And I believe that the SRO should remain on school grounds. Because I believe that it's an opportunity for students to develop relationships with the police officers in their community. Um, and it allows the police officers to know the students in the community. I know when I was in undergrad, I took, I was a criminal justice major. And one of the important things that they talk about is community policing and how police officers should interact with their community and know the students. Because that allows them to better police their communities and allows everyone to know each other and for everyone to feel safe. And by kind of removing that barrier, you don't allow students to get to know police officers, which is bad. Because you should know the people in your community, so that's a problem. Also develop strong relationships with these officers. I still talk to Officer Kinnis today and it's almost seven years later. So I believe that is a great thing. Good evening.
Okay, I, I believe that is the end of the testimonial. Um, but I would like to say that our resource officers are carefully selected for this position. And that they are very, very well trained in terms of many things that um, people might not be aware of. They, they go through a lot of different training for mental health, um, and support of students. They do our first aid, mental health training, they do distorted practices training. Uh, they do extra training for this position and they use it on a daily basis in our schools. And I personally couldn't imagine not having them there. I think they're an asset, a resource and part of our teams in each and every one of our schools. So I'm open for any questions.
Hi, this is uh, Delegate Patterson. Thank you for the presentation. Um, but as you well know, this is an issue that we will be discussing actively. The twenty twenty-one legislation. And so um, I, I can appreciate the testimony from staff and support. I didn't hear anything from a parent nor a current student. But what I just want to stress is that there has to be modification. Modifications and you will see that in the legislation that will be uh, performed or offered in the next session. So as we move along, I think it's imperative that the school system really critically look at modifying. Uh, adjusting of the system uh, to make sure that. Things that work, things that need modification and things that don't work. And so I am encouraging you to really, really critically to have this discussion. Uh, because it will be coming before you. And as legislators, I can only speak for myself, I think it's going to come before ways and means on the House side. I believe it's going to come in the committee that Senator Ellis is a, a member of. And so we want to make sure that we get input and that you, the decision is not top-down. But we have input from you, but I assure you, the model that currently exists will not be, I don't believe, existing. Henceforth. So that is just my commentary, but again, it is going to change. Thank you.
I'd just add to uh, Delegate Patterson, this is Arthur Ellis. Um, I must say, I'm one of those uh, people who put in legislation, pre-file it. And I'm not sure if it popped up on the system yet, but I agree with Delegate Patterson, there must be some changes. You know, what we saw this past summer with the state-sponsored murder of George Floyd, police officer sitting on the neck. Of an African-American man for eight plus minutes. It affects our children. And can imagine them going back to school now, walking the hallways and seeing a police officer. It's traumatized. So we have to fix policing in Amer- and in Maryland. And there are a lot of bills to do that. And I have a couple of bills to uh, help do that on the Senate side. What we have is making the school system a welcoming place for our kids. You know, I'm a military guy, you know, I love law enforcement. I work well with them. They do a great job for us in Charles County. I believe we're one of the best uh, police forces in um, the country here and I've lived all over the place. And systematically though, we are working with the global community, global world where our kids see television, the internet. And they're traumatized by what this country has done with policing to African-Americans. And so we have to adjust that. And, you know, we want to make sure that our kids come to school to learn, okay? Community policing, it belongs in the community. Teaching belongs in the school. I want the kids in my district and our district to come to school to learn, period. And, you know, there's a law in there that talks about the pupil personnel work. Pupil personnel workers, which they're state certified, they are trained, they're experienced teachers and go into. Their certification with PPW. They are training to be advocates for the kid. And so I have legislation to really improve the use of PPWs. And I think we really need to look at this uh, from the perspective of our students and not necessarily administrators and teachers. We need more in the school, but we really need to make sure that our students can.
Think we lost contact?
If, if I may.
Uh, this is, this is Commissioner Stewart. I have a comment. Good morning again, everyone. You know, Doc, Delegate Patterson made a great point. And I know as we go through this process, if the state legislators will continue to address or. This issue at the state level, you will hear and you should hear from teachers and parents. About how they feel about having the officers in the school. And so for a moment, I'm going to take off my commissioner's hat and put on, and, and, you know, speak to my other two hats, most importantly as a parent. Um, I appreciate having SRI, SROs in the school. As a teacher, I really appreciate it. If you haven't walked the shoes of a teacher, you, you, you don't understand the things that teachers have to deal with. I'm an educator that has taught at high school level, alternative education, alternative education day school, alternative education residential. And I've taught at middle schools. I've taught at the best public middle schools that you would think is a private school. And I've taught at the worst, where we had to deal with firearms and drugs on a daily basis. Yes, not in Charles County. The issue at the state level is, please understand that, and, and, and Senator, I wish he was still here. Senator Ellis talked about George Floyd, which was a devastating incident that we are still dealing with as a nation. And we will continue to address and have a conversation. But that's not what's going on in our school system. I heard someone mention earlier about the relationship that SROs build with their students. You can't forget that. SRI, SROs have, and, and many schools have programs, like mentoring programs with the students. They know students by names. The students know the officers. So when they're at the grocery store, they're at the mall, they see the officers, they know them. We need to be very careful about a knee, a knee-jerk reaction of pulling officers out of a school. Because of, of the na- national conversation about policing in our community. SROs help students, they help teachers, they help administration. Please understand to my fellow um, elected officials at the state level. Pulling SROs are, SROs out of the school system statewide is not going to be a good thing. Some school systems, some schools won't even, right now, in the next five, ten years, they won't even be phased because they don't really have those problems. But if you work in a school that has problems with weapons and drugs and bullying and it's at the level that. You need a SRO help, they're not there to help, that could have a traumatic effect on the community, the school community. And lastly, I will say this, as that teacher, I know firsthand. That my, I did not receive bodily harm from a student at an alternative school because that SRO was in that building. The SRO was right there to help me when I needed the help. Without that SRO, uh, the, the, the results of that day would have been very bad. So please, please consider continuing having this conversation, but understand having SROs in the school system. In the school building is not a negative thing. It really helps supports learning. Kids don't have to worry about being attacked. They don't have to worry about being um, bullied. As much with those officers there, because we do have a lot of students, they, they do respect the officers. So please consider just my, my addition to the conversation as a teacher and a parent. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could weigh in?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I uh, I agree with my colleagues, uh Senator Ellis and uh Delegate Patterson. And there is um healthy discussion going on statewide in the legislature. But, and I say healthy discussion, because the presentation that you guys gave is, does not outline a healthy discussion. It is one-sided, you are educators, you should be in the habit of giving information that is balanced and informed. Not once was this, not once in this presentation was it mentioned. That this disproportionately affects African-American kids, especially um black and brown boys. In a state, and, and Amanda, if you might want to cut your speaker off.
Um, oh, oh, yeah, thank you.
Yes, um, and. In a state where we enclose more black and brown young men than any other place in the nation. When it comes to writing policy, you have got to deal with the numbers. So I don't care how anybody feels about. Having an officer there and not having an officer there, I, I really don't care because the numbers are disturbing. The numbers in Charles County alone are disturbing, you conveniently left them out. I am appalled by the idea that we continue in this county to not consider facts when we make policy decisions. I can't imagine what school resource officers are doing right now. But the idea that we need armed people in our middle schools. Is, i- i- it's just unsensical. Is that a word? No. But anyway, the data, the data in itself says that our kids, that black kids are arrested, prosecuted. And put into this school-to-prison pipeline earlier and earlier because of SROs. It's not a knee-jerk reaction, putting officers in schools is a knee-jerk reaction to middle western school shootings. And that our kids have, have to suffer. I could talk about this forever, but please, if you're gonna do another presentation. Look at statistics, let people know. Be, let people be able to make an informed decision as to how they feel about it. And I have gotten just as many calls from students who say they feel intimidated by having officers. There are, there have been state cases about a, a student who went to an officer and confided, and yet she was charged. And it made history in, in the state because of that. And he came from Charles County, we're known for that. So I, I'm gonna get off my soapbox, but I'm a little bit angry just because the data was very skewed and you didn't do a good job. And I have no idea what, how that fits into this presentation. I've got lots of other comments, but I'll make them uh when it's time about how we just deal, we're dealing with money today. This is your meeting and I get it. We're dealing with money today, you get to define money, but I want to talk about, in the middle of a pandemic. With upwards of sixteen million dollars that you have in a rainy day fund. That we're still talking about dollars rather than students' health, their mental health? How many students are even able to learn? We're not even having those discussions today. And I, and it, it really upsets me and I, I, I know we can do better and I'm hoping we will start to do that. Thank you.
Delegate Davis, uh, this is um Commissioner Stewart again. I just want to add on to what you said, you know, one of the things that you said Delegate Davis about. The number of our black boys being um in, put into the system and being the suspension rate. That is true and I agree with you. One of the things, and I would love to be a part of the conversation um for um Dr. Hill. One of the things that Delegate Davis just mentioned is true. But it would be important for the school system to really share that data that she's talking about. To show that it's not, the, the downfall is not because of SROs. And as an educator, I know the, the problem is not the SROs. We have other systematic, systemic, excuse me, problems in the school system that is making that occur. So to really address what Delegate Davis said, we need a broader conversation, not today. About why we're having our African-American um students suspended more than other students. So it, and, and we have to be truthful and open and transparent. And that's a difficult conversation, that I know as an educator is a difficult conversation. But it's not because of the SROs, it's because of other policy. Um, that's our, that's in place and it's because of other, when we talked about earlier about administrators and teachers not having that grace. Right? It's something that some educators are missing, that grace and that understanding of our African-American students. Because if you can't connect with them, you can teach them all day long, but if you can't connect with them, you can't get them to trust you. And you can't, you can't keep those behaviors under wraps. So that's a bigger conversation that we should have, just like Delegate Davis just said. It's a, it's some issues that really need to be addressed.
And I, and I agree, and I suppose, and I propose that we fix that.
Yes.
And we get more coun- school counselors in our schools. All right? I, I think the last presentation I heard, we, there, the ratio was one to four hundred. Get more school counselors in our school before we resort to arrests. Thank you.
And, and Delegate Dave- Just like to add in that um. Uh, Commissioner Stewart has opened up a conversation that was started with uh Delegate Davis. This is the Board of Education's forum. However, as legislators, I believe it's incumbent upon us to move forward, to continue this dialogue. Because it will not go away, and so working with the Board of Education, Charles County Board of Education. Uh, I believe that we, this is just the beginning of conversation. Whether it is to modify and really look closely at what's happening in our schools. As it relates to staffers, teachers, administrators, et cetera. The fact that our system, school system is changing consistently, constantly. And the fact that um I heard nothing and, and Delegate Davis started it. With looking at mental health services uh in combination with whatever arrangement we have with SROs. There was no discussion, and I did not imply that we would remove all SROs. What I'm saying is a discussion will be held, uh, and it's being held now in terms of what we're going to do about it. So I, I appreciate what we've just heard, and I know that we as legislators will have this discussion to continue.
If, if I may speak. Um, first of all, I, 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 I think um. Um, our, our, our chairwoman uh hit it right on the head, that there is going to be a conversation about SROs in the uh, in the schools. And uh, um, one of the biggest issues I have is uh police officers questioning juveniles. And then arresting them after they basically waived their rights as a juvenile who, by law shouldn't even be able to waive their right, the Miranda rights. But unfortunately, uh, kids are taken advantage of by certain law enforcement officers when it comes to juveniles in state. I think that's a huge problem, especially in our schools, we need to make sure that the, a place where they don't get taken advantage of. But I will not conflate the arrest of African-Americans or George Floyd with SROs. Because that brings the emotion into something that we need factual. My daughters go to school here, they go to school in public school. And the community policing part is very important to me, because I believe that we need law enforcement, unless we're gonna defund the police. I want my kids to be comfortable around police officers. If we have to change their behavior, the way they act, that's fine. But I don't believe that, again, we're not gonna defund the cops, I have no plans on getting rid of our SROs, but there is gonna be some adjustments. My biggest issue is, and I'll say this because my daughter brings it up, because she goes to public school at McDonough. My oldest daughter just graduated, my, my little baby's getting ready to go to McDonough. Is the open school campus and school shootings. Because, yes, my oldest daughter had problems with fights every damn day at McDonough until they got an SRO that kind of just hung out there. And I mean every day. Her freshman year, she didn't learn crap. And I'll say lastly, school shootings, that's what my baby right now, Sydney, is worried most about. Is the opening doors, the fact that doors are left open, there's nothing there, the, one of the reasons for parents. That we wanted SROs is to defend our children. We have a lot of work to do, this is gonna be a discussion, but we're not gonna conflate national statistics and George Floyd. With SROs and people in my schools protecting my baby from a school shooter. Because while it seems like it's just a Midwest thing, and Deborah, I love you to death, you know, we don't always agree, so this is not personal at all, but. It's not, they had one at Saint Mary's. It can happen anywhere, God knows we don't want it to happen here. There's a way to do this, and it, and it is hopefully with negotiation from the school board, from the sheriffs. And from the, the state as far as finding a way to make this work, not throwing the baby out with the bathwater. Not saying because some kids are intimidated by cops, let's get rid of all cops or take them out of the schools. And as uh, um, the good Delegate said, um, our chairwoman, um Patterson, that's probably not the goal. And I just want to say that because don't, I don't want people to hear this conversation and say, oh, there's another knee-jerk reaction, we're gonna get rid of SROs. That's not the conversation we're trying to have, we're trying to improve on a system. We're trying to fit a system, so the teachers that have input, please send it to us. The parents that have in, uh, worried about their children, you know, being intimidated by cops, let us know what we can do better to make sure our kids are safe. They can learn, but they're not in, living in a, with a form of intimidation. And by the way, if there are any police officers or any other parents out there who have specific complaints. We've got to act, you can only, we can only act on them if you let us know. Because you're right, nobody should be intimidated in, in their school. From a police officer or another student. And a vast majority of the interactions between, between police officers and other students are to report abuse and bullying. And it's very important for those children to have that voice too. So please don't think of this as some knee-jerk.
Delegate Wilson, this is Commissioner Stewart, I just have one thing to add or a question. I agree with you, um. If there's one thing that if the state legislators could help Delegate Wilson. Is to make it that our school administrators, our SROs cannot take. Written in verbal statements from minors without parents' permission. Or, and/or parents being present, that's a huge issue, huge. So to my delegates, if that is something that you guys can make mandatory across the state. I think that would be a huge plus, because they are minors and they are being asked to put pen to paper. And a lot of times incriminating themselves um to issues, and they don't, and so I'll leave it at that, so please, thank you.
If I can weigh in on that, uh, there was legislation in front of my committee last year to, to say exactly that. And there were representatives from Charles County who came up to speak against. Leaders that you voted for, I'll leave it at that.
And, and thank you Delegate Davis for pointing that out, this is something we're trying to do. It doesn't always look like we get along, but we do, and we all want the same thing for this, for our county and our state. And it is very frustrating when we're trying to do something, what I, which I would consider very minimal. And we get, we get basically pushed back from our own people in our own county, so thank you Delegate Davis.
But I just, I had, uh, this is Arthur Ellis again, I got cut off earlier. And so, you know, this is not my position, it's not me saying, hey, uh, let me do this. I've had town hall meetings, I've spoken to uh, uh, members from all over the community, activists, parents, uh, school board folks, uh, Dr. Hill. About this issue, and our lawyers in Annapolis. This is the issue, our babies, they have issues with what's going on in this country. And we are part of the United States of America, we are part of it, okay? In Montgomery County, statistics came out saying that black men are four times more likely to be stopped by police officers in Montgomery County than white men. Four times. We have the statistics that's collected, when they're collected, it shows a disparity. We are affected by it, and we have to understand what happens anywhere in this country gets in our kids' mind. And unless we deal with it, uh, we really want to ignore it. So we have to deal with it, we have to address it, and so the beautiful thing with the deliberative process in the Senate, the delegates. Nothing gets passed that's haphazard, okay? Everyone weighs in their amendments and, but the discussion is happening, like uh, uh, Delegate uh. Um, Patterson said earlier, and we are dedicated to advance the discussion to make sure we have a good outcome. So this is just the beginning of the process, and we will talk, continue to speak to everyone and really have great outcome from all our citizens here in Charles County.
So the part I appreciate about this conversation uh is that, number one, we're able to share our opinions and our thoughts. Um, what I would ask our delegation to do is what Senator Ellis has already done. And that is reach out to the school system to include us in that conversation. As you're looking at, as delegates in Annapolis, uh, adjustments to the school resource officer program. I would ask that you look at the fourteen-page memorandum of understanding. Between the school system in Charles County and the sheriff's office in Charles County. This document is a model for how school resource officer programs can work well. And again, Senator Ellis, thank you for taking the initiative to reach out to me and to reach out and help to understand uh. All of the sides of this, this um issue. Uh, regarding the suspension and uh punishment of African-American students, particularly black boys. Charles County Public Schools is seventy percent students of color. And we know that every child in our school system is a significant part of our school system. We are stronger because of that diversity. And so six years ago. We started a task force with principals, teachers, members of the NAACP. To address how we can reduce and eventually eliminate the disproportionality that we see in our suspension data. We have never hidden it from anyone, we have reported it annually before our board in public, just as we did a couple of weeks ago. And we have been working on this problem for six years. There is no simple solution, this is not just a school system problem. This is a nationwide problem, and our country has got to do better. As we all have pointed out with what we've seen this past summer, we've got to do better. But I don't believe that the school systems in general are to blame. What we are trying to do is build relationships with all of our kids, with the adults that we have. And there's a multi-pronged way to do this. We've been doing it through restorative practices, we've been doing it through training with all of our people. Our board has just adopted a new equity policy, and they are going to be the first trained in that policy, along with my leadership team. So that then those practices filter down to our school district level, uh, to the teacher classroom level. This is not something that is new, we have been working on it for years, and we will continue to work on it for years. Uh, it, honestly, it, whatever you think is what you think, but I can tell you. That under the leadership of the people on this screen, every child is valued and every child matters. And to think anything else about the school system in Charles County is offensive. Ms. McBride, I apologize, but I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
I'm sorry, Ms. McBride, I was muted for a while and I was trying to speak. Do you mind if I speak for a moment and I'll get, be quick?
Go ahead, Commissioner Bowing.
So I was patiently standing by, um, you know, it's no secret what I do for a living, and I do, I'm a parent, I have two children in the public school system. And um, I think it's important to understand both sides of the perspective, but I think of the utmost importance. And I think everyone on this call wants is for our children to be safe. And with all due respect, Jalen down at Great Mills was not far from us. And there are children that are scared from the outside of people coming in and hurting. And I think there are also children who, because of their experiences in life, have fear of the. I just don't think that separating the two at a critical juncture of an influence when they're that age. Is the right thing to do, I think fixing the problem, and it's like Dr. Hill said, like Mr. Stewart said. It is well beyond the police, it is mental health. Uh, it is socioeconomic issues these children are facing uh at home. I think there's a lot of programs in place to understand when a, you know, a kid comes to school um. Having challenges, that there might have something have happened in the home the night before that lead the child to act that way when they come in school. But I think compromising the safety of our children and our staff is not the way to go. You know, leadership is not about taking the easy road, getting on a soapbox. You know, leadership is not about taking the easy road and getting on a soapbox. Leadership is about seeing the bigger problem. And if you really wanted a bigger problem, it's socioeconomic and it's mental health. So in the in in the words of uh others, uh if if there's bacon that needs to be brought home, Charles County, it's funding for mental health. And it's funding to put um mental health experts in our schools so the proper people are dealing with the challenges our children face and not always putting law enforcement in a position to do things they're not qualified to do. And ultimately, when you call the police, we have to go. What and and sometimes there's situations where we shouldn't be there, but we have. Um, and I think at the end of the day, as a parent, I fear from, I I would fear for my children if there were not Charles County Sheriff deputies in the school. And I can understand others and their point of view, but at the end of the day, I'm a parent and I listen to my community and I think that's the last thing this community. Thank you. Um, and like thank you for letting me have the time to speak.
Sure. Um, I just want to say thank you to everyone who joined us this morning. As I said at the very outset of the meeting today, that we look forward to this opportunity for you to be able to collaborate with our other elected officials. We welcome a seat at the table because there are many issues that we would like to be included in and be able to solve together. So with that, I want to say thank you for your suggestions this morning. Thank you for your input and discussion. And uh we look forward to future collaboration in many of our school issues. So thank you all and have a great day.
Thank you, everyone.